Praradhana mandram pulvendapuri padmanta ikudukin paramistha Joseph uncle
Praise the Lord praradhana jasthukunda premla ma preya parilukapitandri parshudreena ma deva ma prabhraksha kureena Yesu Kristuvari athi sreshstamena ganamayena unatamayena namumena irathiga isayinkaala samyamena nepada sanidilo chiri mamunusthotinchi ganaparchi mahuparchi aaradhisunam shasvatamena prema thoth mamunupreemichi vedeoka maharila krupajupetthundi devadeoka miranundika isthutistu ganaparusunam neegalathandri paripappu isthutistu ganaparusunam netwanti mamunupreemichi mamunurakshinchitakavarkai meepre kumareena adhithe kumareena Yesu Kristu Prabhuatani radhuvela 22 savasralakritamu maakorakai lohka nikvanpichinanduka vandanalu neegalathandri meepre kumarodu dasunisurupum darinsukuni aakaramundu manushuduga ganapuri silavamaranampundanantuga tagginsukunanduka vandanalu maakorakai neegalathandri aikasha apugarastamena netwanti silavanu sahinchinanduka vandanalu vadinpogunnetwanti guarepulaga lokapappu moskunpu devani guarepulaga akalvarisiralo vadinpogunanduka vandanalu meepre kumareena Yesu Kristu Prabhuarikarche netwanti aasilavaraktham dhvara ma pappumulani kshemichi mamununithi mantuluga tipchinanduka vandanalu maakorakai pranambeti trigilechi trigiranenanduka vandanalu stotra jalischnam isayinkaala samyamena maripraba marikrismas pratyaka kudika koraka praradhana jasthavunam meekapreema entagopadu thanri ikudikagadvaadvara anikulu thanri meepreema nartam jasko galugunatlu ga sahayenchindi vaade patunu vaaydhanithi vichchasiyudinsandi vaakumandinchetwanti savadharudu dineshugarni meekarathmatanimpi balaaparchi vaadukkunamani vedukuntu nam translation lotodeindi nadipinsandi neegalathandri marivarevaraithe praba rakshin lenatwanti varu yoka marimetinglatunavatavunaro varni meere darshisturamani vedukuntu nam rakshinavandinatwanti varni nuuthanaparasturandi padipenatwanti varni nuuthanaparchi ujjumpujasthule marilevunethamani vedukuntu ikudika kumere adhi antamendi nadipichi meere mahupundamani samastaganatha mahima prabhavani meekarupinsukundu maaprabhraksha kureena Yesu Kristuvari parshudena namumena praruddhichi vedukuntu nam thanri amen
Thank you uncle Praise the Lord Sivan gitarunni paarsankya note 35 paadukuntam maru paarluskalu paarsankya note 71 Yesu Kristu Prabhu Ayani Antari Ki Prabhu
Yesu Kristu Prabhu Yesu Kristu Prabhu Vaayane Antari Ki Prabhu Vasudhula Pakkan Parundenu Tane Devu Dhaiyupi Vasudhula Pakkan Parundenu Tane Devu Dhaiyupi Narulangavan Sramalabundan Narulangavan Sramalabundan Virigyanbovin Sukamunvedachhi Susholubenpana Virigyanbovin Sukamunvedachhi Yesu Kristu Prabhu Vaayane Antari Ki Prabhu Vasudhula Pakkan Parundenu Tane Devu Dhaiyupi Vasudhula Pakkan Parundenu Tane Devu Dhaiyupi Nitya Jivam Nitya Shanti Ninnanam Madhi Nitya Jivam Nitya Shanti Ninnanam Madhi Nityundesu manakunimba Nityundesu manakunimba Yesu Kristu Prabhu Vaayane Antari Ki Prabhu Vasudhula Pakkan Parundenu Tane Devu Dhaiyupi Vasudhula Pakkan Parundenu Tane Devu Dhaiyupi Veetengolupo alalupaike Veetengolupo alalupaike Veetenvedachi Yesu Vaipo Veetenvedachi Yesu Vaipo Yesu Kristu Prabhu Vaayane Antari Ki Prabhu Vasudhula Pakkan Parundenu Tane Devu Dhaiyupi Vasudhula Pakkan Parundenu Tane Devu Dhaiyupi Maranamelu Loyalakando Maranamelu Loyalakando Karunamolu Kaliginano Karunamolu Kaliginano Yesu Kristu Prabhu Vaayane Antari Ki Prabhu Vasudhula Pakkan Parundenu Tane Devu Dhaiyupi Vasudhula Pakkan Parundenu Tane Devu Dhaiyupi Manajivabo Iistegada Manajivabo Iistegada Tanayulapai Yuddamandho Tanayulapai Yuddamandho Yesu Kristu Prabhu Vaayane Antari Ki Prabhu Vasudhula Pakkan Parundenu Tane Devu Dhaiyupi Vasudhula Pakkan Parundenu Tane Devu Dhaiyupi
Paarsankya note 12 more paadukuntam maru paarluskalu paarsankya note 12 okati paathapadlu paarluskalu 619 asamannadugu Kristu anvitinanduka deva
Asamannadugu Kristu Nive Prabhuva Nive Prabhuva Ihaparapolalo Ejanpa Ihaparapolalo Ejanpa Asamannadugu Kristu Nive Prabhuva Nive Prabhuva Saajiva mojenu nandarki Saajiva mojenu nandarki Pavatnu dha Prabhu Yesu Avaniki maadhirive Pavatnu dha Prabhu Yesu Avaniki maadhirive Avaniki maadhirive Asamannadugu Kristu Nive Prabhuva Nive Prabhuva Maranamukelchitama Prabhuva Paramadevudavu Nive Maranamukelchitama Prabhuva Paramadevudavu Nive Asamannadugu Kristu Nive Prabhuva Nive Prabhuva Chupitive Paramadari Chupitive Paramadari Shaktigalam Prabhuva Nikke masto Tramutu Shaktigalam Prabhuva Nikke masto Tramutu Nikke masto Tramutu Asamannadugu Kristu Nive Prabhuva Nive Prabhuva Misvamantatavo Deva Shashvatamayinadini prema Misvamantatavo Deva Shashvatamayinadini prema Nana muna kuminchinadi Unnatamayna prema Nana muna kuminchinadi Unnatamayna prema Unnatamayna prema Asamannadugu Kristu Nive Prabhuva Nive Prabhuva Asamannadugu Kristu Nive Prabhuva Nive Prabhuva
Paarsankya naalgun rokittik paadukuntam paathapadlu paarluskalu paarsankya 419 maru paarluskalu 419 yesu ninupilichenu vasigas paramogel
Yesu ninna pelachenu Vasiga swaramovino Yesu ninna pelachenu Vasiga swaramovino Kadina badaluvanoche Kadina badaluvanoche Yesu ninna pelachenu Vasiga swaramovino Yesu ninna pelachenu Vasiga swaramovino Rayamothoda Panashamilpi Rayamothoda Panashamilpi Dhane podaveralpolotho Eto ghainchutelevetoda Chanta chenu Yesu ninna pelachenu Vasiga swaramovino Yesu ninna pelachenu Vasiga swaramovino Kritathoda Yesu Prabhu Pranamona pinchenikai Kritathoda Yesu Prabhu Pranamona pinchenikai Tinivalanna veemayattida Papa motho Yesu ninna pelachenu Vasiga swaramovino Yesu ninna pelachenu Vasiga swaramovino Sapakkamani talanuvanchi Yesu ninna pelachenu Vasiga swaramovino Yesu ninna pelachenu Vasiga swaramovino Sopivalena sinchedavuka Vantaprana porukapadu Karakshatu neshanthaseene Chiradhirichotho Yesu ninna pelachenu Vasiga swaramovino Yesu ninna pelachenu Vasiga swaramovino
Swariga of English part paadukuntam Hope Come All You Faithful Osad Baktilara ane paatani English la paadukuntam
Oh come all you faith Oh come me To be at last Come and behold him Bonded king of heaven Oh come let us adore Oh come let us adore him Oh come let us adore him Christ the Lord Christ the Lord God of God Light of light Lord here above Lord of watch Praise the Lord The Lord cannot fear Oh come, let us adore Oh come, let us adore him Oh come, let us adore him Christ the Lord Sing, what's our name Singing in the salvation Sing all ye citizens of heaven above Glory to the Lord Glory in the heart Oh come, let us adore Oh come, let us adore him Oh come, let us adore him Christ the Lord You're not weak Born this happy morning Jesus to thee Glory give Lord of the Father Namely bless upyard Oh come, let us adore Oh come, let us adore him Oh come, let us adore him In Christ the Lord
Thank you brother. Now we are going to do a prayer. Sri Lanka is there. Dinesh is there. We are going to pray. I request Brother Dinesh to say the word of God.
Thank you.
Praise the Lord, brother.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord, brother. How are you after a long time?
Yeah, man, after a long time. Yes. How are you?
Yes, doing good, brother. Thank you. So, good to have an interpreter, known interpreter.
Yes.
Okay, so shall we start?
Yeah.
So, dear brothers and sisters, it is a joy to share the word of the Lord in your midst this evening.
Dear brothers and sisters, it is a joy to share the word of the Lord in your midst this evening. As you may already know that
today's theme is taken from John 3:16.
But the theme we are phrasing it as
true celebration of Christmas.
But in the world today, there is so much of celebration happening. Without having that main reason of celebration behind all these celebrations that they celebrate. Many forget that Christ is the reason for this season. to celebrate Christmas without Christ in the Christmas. For a moment, if you look around us and see how Christmas is celebrated, you can easily see this. Even by the end of November, already you will see the sailboats coming up, sail signs coming up. Today's Christmas is all about dinners and gifts and hampers. It is filled with parties and get-togethers and trips and vacations. But in the midst of all these, Christ, the main reason for Christmas is not there. Someone even commented that no more do you find it is written as Christmas, but rather it is Xmas. So, so much so that Christ has been Xed. There is an X and now Christmas without Christ. So, in a backdrop of this kind of events surrounding Christmas, what is the true celebration of Christmas? So, in a backdrop of this kind of events though we do not know exactly the date on which the Lord Jesus was born. But one thing is very sure that he was born into this world 2,000 years ago. Though we do not know whether he was exactly born on December 25th, yet we know he was born into this world. The simple proof is the world-accepted calendar today begins from the birth of the Lord Jesus. That is how the year is calculated and today we are at 2022. So, even when I gave the theme celebration, true celebration of Christmas, some of you would have been alarmed, "Oh, Christmas celebration? What is that?" Can we celebrate Christmas? Is it good to celebrate Christmas? Yes, dear brothers and sisters, that is what we are going to consider tonight. The true celebration of Christmas. So, we are going to look at those lessons from this theme verse that we gave, John 3:16. So, I would request all of you to, if you have a Bible in your hand, to kindly turn to your Bible and read this verse together with us. Yeah, so I will read it in English first and then my dear brother will read it in Telugu. So, John, chapter 3 and verse 16. For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believeth in him should not perish but have everlasting life. we are given the first reason for us to celebrate Christmas. If you can enable screen sharing, please, I would like to put up some note. Can the host please enable screen sharing?
Yes, brother.
Yes, thank you. No, it has been disabled. Is it okay now? One minute, brother. I'm changing things. So, while that is being rectified, we are going to consider three celebrations that are found in this verse for us to truly celebrate Christmas. So, the first celebration is in this verse is the celebration of love. For God so loved the world, then you find he loved the world. So, even for the Lord Jesus to come into this world, the very basic, the beginning of it all began with love. So, the celebration, the true celebration of Christmas means we are celebrating the love of God, the love of the Lord Jesus. It was the love of God that made all things happen. And that is why today you and I can celebrate Christmas in a true fashion because we are celebrating the love of God. The first one is it was an unending love, an eternal love. In Jeremiah, chapter 31, verse 3, we read, God says to the children of Israel there, he says, "I have loved you with an everlasting love." Now, when we talk about eternal in relation to God, it means there is no beginning and there is no end. But when we talk about eternity or eternal in relation to man, there is a beginning but there is no ending. But when we talk about love, God's love is an eternal love, an unending love, no beginning, no end. And the opposite of that is that man's love has a beginning and also has an end. today we can truly join in this true celebration of Christmas because we are celebrating the unending eternal love of God. Truly, it is a celebration of love because this love has no beginning and has no end. The second reason why we can celebrate this love is it is an unconditional love. In Romans, chapter 5, verse 8, we read that while we were yet sinners, Christ loved us and died us. That is an unconditional love. So, even by the end of November, already you will see the sailboats coming up, sail signs coming up. But all other forms of love of this world is very conditional. In all our relationship with humans, our love is because either we are expecting love or because we are being loved, we love. But when the Lord loved us, when God loved us, it was an unconditional love, when we were sinners, he loved us. Dear brother, dear sister, today sometimes you may not feel, you may not be, you may not feel loved others. You may think that those around you, your family, your relatives, your friends are not giving you that love that you want to receive from them. But remember dear friends, that God has loved you and me with an unconditional love. In our most unlovable state, God has loved us. In our most unworthy state, God has loved us. That is the love that we are going to celebrate. So can we celebrate Christmas? Yes, we can celebrate because it is a celebration of the love of God. For God so loved the world. It is an unending love. It is an unconditional love. Not only that, it is also an unfathomable love, a love that we cannot call it. In Ephesians chapter three verse nineteen, we are not going to read these verses, I would ask you to make note of it. In this verse, we find it speaks about the love of God, the height, the breadth, the depth of the love of God. It is a love that we cannot measure, it is immeasurable. Dear brothers and sisters, all other love of this world can be measured. But the love of God, the love of the Lord Jesus is immeasurable, unfathomable. Don't you think that we need to celebrate this love? You see, when we love someone, we would try to show that love by trying to give something. And we would go and look for the best thing, the expensive thing and get that to show that we love that person. And we would get the best that we can, do the maximum that we can, we would spend. And there will always be a limit, only that that will be the maximum that we can buy, we can spend and we would show our love. But when it comes to the love of God, it cannot be measured, it cannot be priced. So dear brothers and sisters, let us celebrate Christmas in the right manner. This Christmas season, let us celebrate the love of God. Now we are going on to the second celebration in celebrating true Christmas. Secondly, it is a celebration of lending, a celebration of giving. In John three sixteen, we find, God so loved the world and he gave, he gave his only son. If God did not give his son, Christmas will not be worthwhile celebrating. It is because of this giving of God only, today you find even during Christmas, there is so much of giving and sharing with one another. It is very commonly known that during this season, that people give, give to the poor, give gifts to one another and it's a time of giving. But where did all this giving start? It started on that first Christmas, when God gave his only begotten son into this world. And we find, it is truly a giving, a lending that we need to celebrate. Because God gave his precious, the precious thing of God, he gave it to us. See in John three sixteen, it says he gave his only, only begotten son. When God said he loved you and me, he did not simply say it and keep quiet. But he gave the most precious thing that he had and that is his own dear son. So that is the, that is what we need to celebrate today. We are celebrating the giving of God, giving of his precious son. Dear brothers and sisters, try to come into terms with this giving. Try to come into terms, try to understand this kind of giving. To whom did he give the most precious thing that he had? To sinners unworthy, unlovable like you and me. We would give something precious to a person who is worthy to receive it. In this world, if you love someone, maybe your wife or your, the person with whom you are in a love relationship, you will buy the most precious diamond and you can give it. But will you go and buy a diamond and give to your enemy? Or to someone who is doing things against you, will you go and give a diamond? But God gave us, when we were unlovable, when we were sinners and enemies of God. He did not give the least, the leftovers, but he gave his precious son. That is why we can celebrate Christmas. The second thing about the celebration of lending is, he gave the perfect gift. In Hebrews chapter nine verses twelve to fourteen, we read, the writer to the Hebrews is telling, the blood of animals is not sufficient to take away our sins. All the blood of animals that was shed in the Old Testament time was not sufficient to take away our sin. All that animal sacrifice was prescribed by God only as a covering for sin. But that blood of animals could not cleanse and purge our sin. But it was the blood of the Lord Jesus, the spotless lamb of God, that was able to take away all our sins. So that is why we find that we can say that God gave the perfect, the exact one that we needed. So the celebration of the giving of God is, we are not only celebrating that he gave his precious, but we are also celebrating that he gave the perfect one, the right one that we needed. Dear friend, tonight, are you willing to celebrate that giving of God, that lending of God? It was a precious giving, it was a perfect giving. It is also a purposeful giving. God's giving, God's lending was with a purpose. And that is found in John three sixteen. That we may not perish in our sin. The giving of God, the lending of God was with a purpose, so that you and I will be saved and that we would have eternal life and not perish in our sin. When we give to one another, there is always an ulterior motive behind our giving. Either we are giving, expecting something in return. Either we give because we want to get something done. Or we may give to win the heart of someone. But dear brothers and sisters, when God gave, he had only one purpose in mind. That is your salvation and my salvation. Forgiveness of your sin and my sin. It was because of your sin and my sin, God gave that his only begotten son with that purpose that we might be saved. So don't you think dear friends, dear brothers and sisters, that we need to celebrate the lending of God? So don't you think, dear friends, dear brothers and sisters, that we need to celebrate the lending of God?
Ka abate devudu manaku anugrahin chadu, a anugrahin chadu etu vanti, a stithini guruthu yeskuntu, manamo, a e Christmas ne jarpkuvali, aadi kaadu antara?
So true celebration of Christmas is a celebration of love.
Ka abate nizamayana Christmas ante, devuni priyam manu vedukuga jarpkuvali.
True celebration of Christmas is a celebration of the lending, the giving of God.
Nizamayana Christmas ante, devuni okka, ichchina etu vanti, asthitini, daanam jeshet etu vanti, asthitini, ardan yeskuntu, manan yeskuwal.
And now we come to the third uh aspect of the true celebration of Christmas.
Maru nizamayana Christmas ante, moodu vashangat eendu chuddamo.
It is a celebration of life.
Adi entante, jeevamune, manam celebrate yeskuwal.
In John three sixteen, that is what we find, that we may have everlasting life, everlasting life.
Moodu padaharu lo adi antunadu kada, nasimpaka, nithey jeevamu undunatlu.
We who were destined to death and eternal separation from God, were given life.
Maru, maranapathulamu, devuni ki, sadakalamu, duranga unna valisna varamu, kani, devudu manali day dalchi, bahuma namu nichchadu, yeppe deite, manam nasinchipo valisna, ausrama ledu, gani, sadakalamu jeevinse, nithey jeevamunu manam podukogalutunna.
John one four, thystas, in him was life.
Yohan swarta okkada vadhyam, naalgu vachnullo, yamanundante, aina lo, jeevamundene.
Yes, dear brothers and sisters, if we say we are celebrating Christmas, what we are celebrating is that we are celebrating that we have received life.
Maru ka abate manamo, Christmas jarpkuvali ante, asalena Christmas jarpkuvali ante, aina lo una jeevamunu manam kaligundee, daanima vedukuga yeskuwal.
Because the Bible very clearly tells us in Ephesians chapter two, verse one, that we were dead in our sins and trespasses.
Edukante devu ne vaakyam, F A C patrika, renda vadhyaymo, okkada vachnullo, yentho spashthanga teleyeshtu addundee, manamayte jeevamgalavaalam kaadu, gani, mana mandaramu guda mana paapumalu bati, mana abaradamu bati, chachinavaram.
But now because of the Lord Jesus, you and I have been quickened to life, we have life.
Yeppe deite, yesu kristu nandu viswasa munchvaru, yesu kristu prabhu varanu bati, paapumalu, abaradamu bati, chachesithalo undar, gani, paapumalu toligpoyi, valu jeevam, anagaa nithey jeevam, shaashvata jeevam podukununda.
Don't you think that we need to celebrate this life?
Ka abate Christmas ante, didikada mana gaavasina, nithey jeevanga, dama mana kundanidhi.
Because it is a, an endless life, an everlasting life.
Maru, nithey jeevam, nithey jeevam, ante, nirantaramu nilichundee jeevitam.
Romans six twenty-three tells us, that the wages of sin is death, death, but the gift of God is eternal life through Christ Jesus.
Romula trastra patrika, aro vadhyaymo, ro mooda vachnullo, maru devu ne vaakyansalvisstunde, paapumu valana vachu, jeetamu, maranam.
Yes, dear brothers.
Devuni krupa varamo, pravayana kristu esanando, nithey jeevam.
Yes, dear brothers and sisters, we can celebrate life, because the Lord Jesus has given us life.
Maru manamo, kristu yodda nunni jeevam podukunavalam, aite, a jeevamunu bati, Christmas manan jarpkuvali.
And the Lord Jesus himself said, this is eternal life, to know the Lord Jesus, the Son of God.
Maru, suprabhu guda evantradante, devu ne Kumar ne, na kristu esunu teliskunudae, nithey jeevam.
Dear friend, you can celebrate Christmas truly, only if you have experienced this life, this eternal life through the Lord Jesus.
Ka abate yesu kristu molanga, devu ne ichcha nithey jeevanu manam anabavichna pude, mana jeevitamalo, mana kutumalo, manamo nizamayana Christmas ne jarpkuvalutam.
This life is not only an life endless, but it is also a life of fullness.
Maru, e jeevam, devu ne ichcha jeevam, nirantaramu undee jeevam maatrme kaadu, gani, aadi paripurnamayana, santrupthinichchadu etu vanti jeevam.
In John chapter ten, verse ten, the Lord Jesus said, I have come that they may have life and have it more abundantly, abundant life.
Yohan swarta padvadhyaymo, yesu krishpravu evantradante, neenu variki, leda vaadi ki, jeevam nichchutaku vachitini, samrudhyayna jeevam nichchutake vachitini addad.
This is not a boring life.
Christam jeevitamu, kristichcha jeevitamu, edo manaki bore godutunde, inkachese daaniki emilede, ayu na kasalitu, phalvotlede, ane elanti, manaki nirasaktika undetu vanti jeevitam kaadu.
But it is a life of fullness, of abundance, a life that you enjoy every day of your life.
Kani, kristu manaki ichcha jeevam, elandide jeevam, aadi nithey mu undetu vanti jeevam, aadi samrudhyayna jeevam, manolo nunni uppongii, baitiki porli parayetu vanti jeevam.
There is fullness of joy, there is fullness of peace, there is fullness of comfort, there is fullness of life, this is the kind of life.
Devu ne manaki ichcha jeevam, aadi elandide jeevam, ante, aadi samrudhyayna jeevam, samrudhyayna shanti, samrudhyayna samadanam, samrudhyayna etu vanti santoshamu kaligundetu vanti jeevam.
Even in the midst of all the crises and calamities and the circumstances that we face in life, we still are able to enjoy the richness, the fullness of the life that God has given us.
Mana jivitanlo, mana elandide peristhilo, napadikini, devu ne ichcha jeevam taluku, a paripurnatani, a santrupthinani, a shanti samadanamunu, manam elandide stithalo, aina guda anavavinsakalutam.
Today, you may be going through various difficult experiences in life.
Ka, bhavsha e dinamu meru, me vyaktikata jivitanlo, maru chapukoda daaniki velleni, peristhilo guda velthu undavach.
But if you have the life of the Lord Jesus in you, you will experience that fullness in life in spite of all what you may face in life.
Kani, me elandide peristhilo unna, okavela, devu ne ichcha, kristu esu molanga, manukodarki, nithey jeevanu, kanuka, me podukunavalaite, a peristhithinu bati, me re maatrma ayasapadaragani, devu ne ichcha nithey jeevamun bati, me devuni samadanamunu, devuni shanti me anavavistadu.
Because he lives, because we have life in him, we can face tomorrow.
Maru, aina jeevinchichunnadu kanuka, aina jeevam manalo unnappudu, manamo re bati, bhavishyattuno, yentho dayriyanga edurko kalutam.
And then, it is also a life of newness.
Pardon?
It's a life of newness.
Parante, jeevam, elandide jeevam, ante, naveena mayana jeevam, nothana tatvam galigina etu vanti jeevam.
Two Corinthians five seventeen tells us, if any man be in Christ, he is a new creation, old things are past to be, old things that become new.
Rando korindi, aidu adhyaymo, padhigeda vachnullo, vaakyansalvisstunde, evu reina no kristu esanando, neyedala, idigo varu, nothana srishthi, pathavi ani gatinsipotai, ani guda krotthavavai.
When you truly receive the life of the Lord Jesus in you, your whole life will be transformed.
Maru devu ne okka nizamayana, a jeevam, nithey jeevam, yeppe deite, nuvva podukuntavo, nee jeevitam purthika marpu chendutunde, maripotu.
Your old way of living is no more, you are a brand new man, you are a new creation.
Maru kristu yesu jeevam, meelavunappudu, me rinka patha paddadi, patha alawatu, patha pokkada lo undene undar, gani, nothana mayana srishthi ka me martharu.
So it is a new life?
Ka abate okka nothana jeevam.
Shouldn't you celebrate that newness of life?
Ka abate Christmas ante, e nothana jeevamunu manamo, maru vedukuga jarpkuvali, sambarali yeskuvali.
This life is experienced only through the Lord Jesus Christ.
E jeevam manu kedu darukadu, gani, kevulam, yesu kristu lo ne manu darukutu.
So dear brothers and sisters, today, you and I, knowing this truth, we can truly celebrate Christmas.
Ka abate e satyala evu rete teliskunudar, ala andi satyamu teliskunavalam, maatrme, Christmas ne asalena Christmas ka jarpkuvalutam.
No matter what others around us may be, uh thinking and their opinion and attitude of Christmas may be.
Maru, mana sutuunnetu vanti, variki Christmas ante, vereena abiprayamu, vereena avagahun undatsu.
You and I can truly celebrate Christmas.
Aite, alandu varito manu sambandha undadu, gani, yeppe deite, manam e sambhavitul yeskuntamo, asalena Christmas ne manam jarpkuvach.
If we know the Lord Jesus as our personal Savior and Lord, we can truly celebrate Christmas.
Yesu kristne manamo vyaktikata rakshakuniga, vyaktikata prabhuiga, manu yeppe deite, erugutamo, teliskuntamo, aina no angikristamo, appudu, manalo asalena Christmas ane de jarugutu.
Because it is a celebration of love.
Edukante Christmas ante, asalena devuni priyamunu manamo teliskunudae.
Because it is a celebration of lending, the giving of God.
Maru, Christmas ante, devu ne okka asalena daanamu, aina manukoruk anugrahin chadu etu vanti, a ichchina sangatini rahin chadu me.
It is a celebration of life.
Christmas ante, devu ne manukoruk ivala ne udeshinchina, nithey jeevamunu podukunudae.
But the question tonight is this.
Ka abate saayinkalamo, me kandari kova prashtha.
Have you responded to the love of the Lord Jesus?
Maru, yesu krishprabhu varu, e priyamaku, meyeppe deina, sanukulanga spandinchara.
Has the purpose of the giving of God been accomplished in your life?
Devu ne edo udeshamato, edo guri galigi, edo korika to, tanadvitiya Kumar ne manukoruk anugrahin chadu, a korika needu vara, nirverinda, neelo a nithey jeevam, aina chodakalutunada.
Have, have you received the experience of life being quickened to life from being dead?
Maru, nuvva paapi ga unnappudu, paapumalu bati, chachpoyu unnappudu, devu ne okka priyama, devu ne okka jeevam, neenu ujeevampajese, neenu brathikinchindi, yeppe deenu chachinavadu kaadu, gani, brathiki, nithey jeevam galigavaduwe, annu chapakalava?
Dear friend, dear brother, dear sister, if you have not yet known this, then today, give your life to the Lord Jesus.
Okavela, ilandide evi inkarangu delidu, asalilandide eegu guda naa ardhangaavanna etu vanti, priyamayana sahodara, sahodari, e dinamu, e vaakyam nekorake.
All what you need to do is to tell in your heart, Lord Jesus, I am a sinner, please forgive me and come into my heart and life.
Maru, e devu ne ichcha nithey jeevam podukovali ante, maru manam jeyvalisinala okkade, manamo viriginaligina furudheymu to, mana paapumalu vishume, mana paschataapu padi, devu dagarukochi, deva, paapi naina, nannu karuninchu, nannu ksheminchu, nannu rakshinchu, anu manamo, yeppe deite, dardhanga, dardhistamo, appudu devu ne nithey jeevanu manaki istadu.
Tonight, if you would simply in your heart, pray this prayer, and invite the Lord Jesus into your heart, you can truly celebrate this Christmas.
Prabhu ina yesu, paapi naina, nannu ne ratthamato kadigi, na furudheyu lo nikira, na jeevitamu lo nikira, na jeevitani maachchu, ani neve ganaka, e saayintram, dardhanga, prathisthe, neve, e Christmas ne, asalena ardhavantamena Christmas ka jarpukune vyaktivi.
So may the Lord help us, to come into that experience of truly celebrating the meaning of Christmas.
Ka abate koodikalo, chere vachna etu vanti, priyamayana sahodaru, sahodari lu, e vaakyamintanavali, evu reina sare, me rinka nizamayana Christmas ante, ento teliskokunda, kevulamu lokamlo, samajamlo, me rjuusina vaadi chetene, me ru guda, mosapothu, ini samachral jarmukundee, e samachramayana, asalena ardhamato, asalena bhavamato, asalena Christmas ne, maru chapabada vidanga jarpko daaniki, devu ne, me kandari ki sahay padunagata.
Let us pray.
Pradhinsukundam.
Our gracious, loving Heavenly Father.
Ma kuru paga, priyamaga, paraloka, pandri.
We thank thee, O God, for loving us with an everlasting love.
Shaashvata mayana priyamato, mama le priyamistu, ndakai, mek vandaramalu chelliistunnaamo.
Lord, we thank thee, thou loved us so much, that you gave your only begotten son.
Nu mama le entaga priyaminchavante, ma vishemayini, advitiya Kumar ne anugrahin chadu.
So that we may not perish in our sin, but by believing on him, we would have eternal life.
Maru, me mu, a paapumalu, nasinchudani, kishthamaledu, ka abate aina midu viswasa munchudachaeta, me mu nithey mu jeevinchalaani, nithey jeevam mu maak prasadinchutaku, mevani Kumar ne anugrahin chadu.
Lord, we thank thee for, this is the story of Christmas.
Maru, Christmas yokka asalena kada idi, ani me rma ki saayinkala matlathu vacharu.
This is the meaning of Christmas.
Maru, Christmas yokka bhavamante, ide, ani me rma to matlathu vacharu.
This is the celebration of Christmas.
Christmas yokka veduka ante, ide, ani me rma ku teleyeshtu vacharu.
Lord, help us, that we may come into the full experience of the meaning and purpose of Christmas, so that we can truly celebrate it.
Ka abate deva, maru me mandaramu guda, e Christmas ne asalena ardhamato teliskuna, asalena bhavamato, paripurnamayana, maru vidanamalo daanich jarpkundaku, ma kandari ki sahayam cheni.
Lord, help us, that we may know the Christ of this Christmas.
Deva, Christmas ane, e pandagalo nakristu, erugutaku maak sahayam cheni.
Lord, we give ourselves to thee.
Deva, mama le me munike apaginsukuntuna.
Thank thee for this time of uh studying and meditation of thy word.
Deva, maru saayinkala me vidanga, maru okka online lo, ne okka vaakyamunu varukoni, asalena Christmas ante, ento, janinchko daaniki, me rma ku sahayin jeshar, mek vandaramu.
Lord, help us not only to adhere to this message, but help us also to tell this message to everyone else around us.
Deva, kevulam, diinukuri chivina maatrme kaadu, gani, diin mulanga, me mu nizanga, ma jivitanlo guda marpu pundi, maru kristu nu podukoni, nizamayana Christmas, me mu jarpukoni, a vidanga itarla guda anekulaku, nizamayana Christmas kulinchichappadaku, ma kandari ki sahayam cheni.
Lord, help us to share the gospel, share these good news to everyone around us during this season.
E Christmas dinalalo, e shubavartanu, anekulaku punchkunadaku, maak mek akrupanivani.
So we give thee thanks and praise.
Meke vandhalistotraalu.
Thank thee for the Lord Jesus.
Me rma anugrahin chadu, me Kumar ne, yesu kristu varanu bati, mek vandaramalu.
In the name of our Savior, the Lord Jesus, we pray.
Pravayana yesu kristu, rakshakunamalo, pradhinchivedukundanama, pandri.
Amen. Now may the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, and the love of God our Father, and the fellowship and the ministry of the Holy Spirit, continue to rest and abide with us this night, and until the Lord comes again. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the Lord, brother.
Praise the Lord.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Praise the Lord. Zoom no sayanam, me yandari ki, pravan eskamno, vandrantale, eskamno, praise the Lord. Pravushitamayte, sukruvarum, saayintram, teri eda, manu zoom edikali undam, lai chespaadinchandi, paul bondandi, italnu guda aapmanicha, praise the Lord.